Ready? All right, welcome everyone to the city council meeting for Monday, May 13th. If we could have a roll call, please ma'am, establish quorum.
Nikki Schneider.
Here.
Bob Thomas.
Here.
Susan Harmon.
Here.
Harry Meyer.
Here.
Melissa Green and Terry are absent with notice.
All right, from that stand, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Can I get a motion for the approval of the agenda?
Make a motion to approve the agenda, second.
Motion, second. Item number three, under new business, the ordinance for aggregate and sidewalks will need to be deferred. Mr. Weaver's still working on that. Any other changes? Yes, Susan.
Can we, I know Melissa's not here either, so I know she's on a couple of these, and let me just see which one it is. Looks like the master plan, and then discussion of previously proposed animal law changes. Can we defer both of those?
Mr. Thomas?
Melissa only seconded the master plan, so she really wasn't involved, and I'm prepared to discuss it tonight.
And she only seconded my thing. I think we just need to clarify something with the city attorney. I think that's all we were doing.
Okay, so y'all feel like keeping it on the agenda?
I don't care, it's up to you guys.
All right, otherwise hearing none, motion to...
Oh, wait a minute, wait a minute, I'm sorry. The, where'd it go? The Norris property?
Uh-huh.
Did you have anything on that? Because that was Terry.
I don't have, I've got a little update, I don't have the formal anything written.
Well, you've got the update, okay.
Well, talk about it.
Okay, well, because Terry wasn't here and I didn't know if you wanted to wait or not.
Well, we'll be deferred anyway, so.
It'll be in the minutes.
All right, are all those in favor of the agenda as amended, sing five, sing aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Get a motion to approve the minutes. Yeah.
Motion to approve the minutes, second.
All right, any corrections, additions? Hearing none, all those in favor of the minutes as submitted, sing five, sing aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. We still have vacancy in the planning commission and also the CAPC, and I think Mr. Huss is here to give us a little presentation on the parks update.
Evening, everyone. As promised, here for our quarterly report. We've had a pretty eventful first quarter for parks. Started our year off with storm damage out at the lake and replacing our marina, insurance claim for that, and a number of our boats. We've replaced flooring in all of our cabins, my stands one, out there at Lake Leatherwood and some campsites. We've done some tree trimming, both in town and at Leatherwood for hazard tree limbs and things of that around campsites. We removed a tree in Basin Park. We've been working down in Harmon on the same types of things. We've finished our turnaround at the top of our downhill trails for the shuttle to drop offs. We're no longer crossing the highway or utilizing the hotel parking lot back onto our own property up there, and it's functioning very well. Spent a lot of time this winter on our springs, adding some new beds, utilizing the city's compost, which is wonderful, to put some of those in. Also had a tremendous amount of work we've done in our office, replacing the floor ultimately, which has turned to replacing the electric, which has turned to patching more electric, which is now painting that wall. You guys know how that goes around here when you start doing that. Vince Peschkar, our maintenance lead, is amazing. In my office, we had an inch and seven-eighths drop from one corner to the other. So we don't roll away in meetings anymore now when we go in there, so that'll be nice. We've had some vehicle challenges recently, and we've lost our flat bed and replaced it. Looking with additional staff, trying to add another vehicle or two if possible, try to minimize our mileage expenditures. We've added some staff, we've had some staff turnover. We lost our groundskeeper, Shannon Lively, earlier this year to a tremendous opportunity he had to follow. General seasonal turnover, as we all experience around town, getting ready to staff back up again on that. And of course, we've had the loss of Terry Leicher recently, our city gardener, still resonating throughout our staff and working on all that. And having, really just want to thank the citizens who've come out and volunteered. We have a lot of groups that are reaching out to us on how do we help with the springs and what do we do, and ways to honor Terry and help out and keep those going. So we do want to thank all the public that has helped so far, and there's some more opportunities and some local groups talking about adopting some of the springs. So we're taking those silver lining as that maybe we can engage some of the people that are around the springs and use the springs to participate in them. As everybody else has, it's been, the first quarter's been fairly rough for weather on the weekends. It seemed like every weekend it'd rain, or it'd rain right before, which would kind of shut down our trails. So it's kept our revenue, high expectations down, although we're still around our projections. And that combined with our spending, not a freeze, but being very carefully spending this year, we're sitting at about $3,000 to the good for the first quarter. One thing that has been tremendously successful for us is the shuttle for the downhill trails out of Lake Leatherwood. So far in this lackluster first quarter, if you will, we've already hit 46 percent of what our projections are for 2019 for the shuttle revenue. So we have some pretty high expectations for that as we run through the summer, just with the numbers we're seeing and the locations we're seeing. This weekend will be the Continental Enduro, the Enduro World Series Continental Qualifier. It's a mouthful there. This is one of three races in the continental United States. It's a qualifier for the World Enduro Racing Series. This was a, I don't know what the amount was to host this, but Oz Trails and Walton Foundation paid, I believe, $8,000 to apply to host it, to give you an idea of the backing that they've put behind this. This is a pretty big deal. And this will be, again, utilizing the Trails of Leatherwood, the Passion Play, and in town again on Sunday morning with our urban downhill, which is really popular, and get to come down some staircases and all that. So a lot of that stuff coming out this week, as a few things have been firmed up on their end for advertising. Generally, we have high expectations for the year. The CAPC has put some advertising out in Bike Arkansas Magazine, for instance, some billboards over in the corridor, and just continued organic spread of videos and people out visiting the park. We're really expecting to see a major impact this year across the town, and not just in parks. We think everybody's going to see that, and we're excited about that. We feel like we're providing some infrastructure and developments that are benefiting the town, and that's what we're supposed to do. So we feel like we're competing that mission and being fiscally responsible and having some dramatic yet reasonable growth. So that's what I have, so I'm happy to take any questions. Anybody have anything? Ms. Ma'am?
I just have a question, just because I'm not out there on a regular basis, but I know you've got the shuttle income, correct? How else do you make money on the trails?
It's really ancillary stuff. I mean, it's camp, some of them camp, you know, we do get some of those, and we're trying to track those within our system to find the same guests on there. You know, other than that, we're looking at other ways to capture some of that vending machines for after-hours, tires, tubes, the trails out there shred tires, so, but that's our direct revenue.
So the majority of it is coming from the shuttle?
Yeah.
Okay.
And it's been, we had one, I believe it was Easter, the Saturday of Easter weekend, we did $1,000 on Saturday, $20 a head. So it's doing pretty good.
That $20 on holiday ticket?
Just kind of think of it like a lift ticket. Same, the whole thing's kind of concept, like ski slope, so, yeah. And generally, the people, the folks that are riding in Colorado and places like that and coming out, just think it's a heck of a deal. They think we're charging, we aren't charging enough, so we'll look at that later.
Anybody else? Justin, thanks. You might want to stick around for the other item there, too, comes up. All right, that brings us to public comments.
Good evening. My name is David Mary, I live at 52 Wall Street. At present, we are developing a small subdivision up on East Mountain Street, and I'd like to propose to the city council that they accept the street as a city street. And we were, presently is, it is deeded to us, and we would like to deed it to the city. And then it has been pre-approved by the department, the fire department, because it's proper grading and the proper width for their big fire trucks. There's a fire hydrant we have put in there. We have put in all-new sewer lines, all-new water lines, approved by the state. And by, the meters are read by the city, so the street is presently being used as a city street, basically. They come in there and they pick up the trash, they pick up the recycling, there's mail delivery, there's new buried electric and gas all through the subdivision. We have three houses completed and sold, that are paying taxes to the city now. There is three more that we're building probably in the next year and a half, so we're going to have, we have a total of 16 that we're building in there, so it's going to be a good piece of the city. They're very, very nice homes. We have Central Park in the center of the road that we are using for collecting the rainwater, because we're the highest point around, and we're worried about rainwater coming down and going through people's yards. So we're using the park to absorb the rain and hold it on the property. It is already basically being used as a city street, so I would just like you guys to accept it as part of the city. And then it's, we were told basically that it's not up to city standards, but so are half the streets in this city are not up to city standards. And this is just, you know, we don't want to pave the roads because we're using the roads to absorbing the rain, too, so it's part of our initial plan. As we've put in rain gardens on all the houses to hold the water in, too. So basically, it's going to be a very nice little subdivision up there, and it's going to be a good contribution to the city. The people we're getting in are, seem to be retiring people that want to come here, and they don't want to be living in the older homes, because it's just too hard to maintain them and renovate them, so I think we're going to be a good chunk for the city, and we're going to be good for the city. And I'd like you guys to have it deeded to you.
What was the name of the street again?
Corley Street.
How do you spell it?
It was originally deeded, platted as part of the city back in the 1800s, and then it was vacated and given to the property owners that we bought it from. So then we want to give it back to the city, basically. That's all I got to say. Any questions?
We're not allowed to.
All right, thanks, sir.
Okay.
All right, that concludes the public comments. Next item will be the unfinished business, ordinance 2278 prohibiting animal suffering on the second reading. Mr. Thomas?
I move to suspend the rules and read ordinance 2278 by title only for the second reading.
Second.
Okay, motion, second, discussion. Right, hearing none?
Ms. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Ms. Harmon?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
4-0. Ordinance number 2278, an ordinance amending the Eureka Springs Municipal Code to prohibit animal suffering.
Mr. Thomas?
I move to pass ordinance 2278 on its second reading.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? No discussion? All those in favor, sing five, sing aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. That, be our next item, will be Mr. Weaver's opinion on discussion, decision on reducing fees at Echo Village. Get a motion to discuss?
Motion to discuss.
Second.
Mr. Weaver?
As I understand the question, and if I'm wrong, I would like to be corrected, but there was a move and council action to reduce some fees. As long as those fees were not designated as TAP fees, I think the city is within its ability to reduce fees. State law, I think, prohibits the reduction of TAP fees into the, well, sure. So as far as other fees that are controlled by the city, if the council in this instance or in any other instance wishes to lower a fee or waive a fee, it appears to have the ability to do so. But if it comes to a TAP fee, we do not have that ability based on case law out of the state court system.
Any questions?
So we can if we want to, according to our law?
State law supersedes whatever we do in that area.
So if we did it on ours, and the state could say no?
The state could actually impose sanctions against the city.
So knows we shouldn't do this?
Not if it's TAP fee.
TAP fee, okay. What about the rest of it?
What?
The other fees are collected and spent by the city's will, by the council's direction.
So we can do with anything else, just not the TAP fee?
I won't say anything else, but as far as building fees and construction fees.
That's what I mean.
Yes.
That's what I'm referring to, okay.
Any other questions, comments? All right, ready to move on to our next item? This is a new business ordinance for fireworks. You have in your packet an ordinance, proposed ordinance, allowing us to shoot off fireworks inside city limits. Get a motion to discuss?
Motion to discuss.
Second.
Second. I'm going to let our parks director lead off on this. This is really kind of exciting for us.
I agree with the mayor, I think it is a pretty exciting prospect, and what we're looking at doing, ordinance required to be able to do this, is the parcel in town here between Magnetic and Mill Hollow, known as Marble Flats, was purchased by the NWA Trailblazers for trail development and the process through this. Seeing as it's one of the highest points in town and is rock all on the top, and the challenges we had in our last Fourth of July, we thought that that would be an interesting spot to shoot off fireworks through town. And what that would do would allow basically anyone who has a deck facing either direction through town, be restaurants, private residences, you know, Mars, but everyone would have a chance to see this, and we just think it'd be a pretty neat way to do this. We'd be doing it the sixth, which is actually after the fourth. It's much cheaper with that, and there's a finite number of licensed shooters in Arkansas.
It's a Saturday?
It's a Saturday, following the first day, the fourth is Thursday. So with that, we've, but we've taken the fire chief and fire marshal, visited the site with us, and given their blessing, obviously barring any sort of dryness, as we all stood there, we all agreed that none of us want to be that guy that we're trying to shoot off fireworks in the dry season, obviously, but they felt good about it, again, with the rock up there. And we think it'd be a neat thing, that would be a draw, that's kind of a, we start kind of declining, a lot of people started hitting the lake that weekend and after that, so we would draw a little folks back in there, and plus just a great spot, everybody could even pause for 15 minutes, and work in the restaurants and get a chance to see fireworks. And I think it'd make a heck of a picture of the, down the Eureka Springs image with fireworks in the background, so that's what we propose.
So you're planning it on Saturday, not on the fourth?
Correct. Yeah, it's just prohibitively expensive. Our $8,000 show would be about 16 for the same deal. So plus they have some stuff left over sometimes, we could get a couple extra shows.
And had you taken in consideration the fallout? Okay, my husband used to help do it at Holiday Island. They only got blown up once.
These guys are professionals, we're not going to be out there playing around ourselves.
They were experienced, not professionals.
Experience is one thing, yeah.
They knew how to run fast.
Mr. Thomas?
On the calendar, do we have to read this three times tonight, or can we read it two times tonight and one time at our next meeting?
I think we may time to.
We've decided we could read it twice and then I would off them one time.
Okay.
So, yeah, we got, and that's why we're bringing it up tonight, so we got time to do this. Yes, Ms. Harmon?
Since you're the one that brought this, can you, I'm assuming the portion that was added or amended starts with, where it says, goes through the first, 72401, goes through the first part of that, and then it says, "accept when done by an employee of the city as part of their official duties," and the remainder of that sentence. Is that what you added to this particular?
The portion you just read, plus the remainder of that sentence.
That's what I'm saying, from here to the very end of that paragraph?
Yes.
That was all added?
That is all added.
Okay, all right, that's all I needed to know. Thank you.
Anybody else? Mr. Thomas?
I'll forget.
Ms. Schneider?
Just one request, that if we pass this, which I'm assuming we will, please, please, please make sure it is put out there to everyone. Unless you live in town with doggies, you have no idea.
Oh, sure, and that's one of the things we want to get out folks for the notice about that.
Lots and lots of advertising, please.
And we're going to be reaching out with the drone contractor to, who's going to send a drone up to look at the elevation, to shoot back at town, to try and give everybody an idea, there's your window, you can see it, you know, there's your deck, you can see it, so we can give people some, next year we'll all know where we can see it from and whose deck's the best, but this year we're going to have a little bit, we're going to try and get that out a little bit. It's pretty much, almost a straight line from Christ to the Ozarks to the Crescent Hotel is where Marble Flats are, it's about halfway between there, so.
Yeah, that'll be echoing really good in town and scaring all of our pets to death. I don't like cats screaming at me.
To teammates.
Thank you.
Mr. Thomas?
I move to sign the fireworks ordinance, the number, and read it for the first time.
Second.
Okay, you got a motion and a second to sign the number and read it first time. Any other comments? All those in favor, sing five, sing aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
The ordinance number will be 2279, an ordinance amending Title VII of the Eureka Springs Municipal Code to clarify use of items containing powder or other combustible or explosive material, or to employ or in any way utilize theatrical pyrotechnics. Whereas the City Council of the City of Eureka Springs desires to better codify its regulation of the use of commercial fireworks and/or other items containing powder or other combustible or explosive material, or to employ or in any way utilize theatrical pyrotechnics within the city. Now therefore, be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Eureka Springs, the Title VII of the Municipal Code be amended as follows. Section 1, subsection 7.24.01 shall be amended to read as follows. 7.24.01, firing. It shall be unlawful for any person to fire or discharge any firearm, pellet gun, BB gun, hair rifle, or any toy cannon, or to set off any squibs, fire trackers, or other thing containing powder or other combustible or explosive material, or to employ or in any way utilize theatrical pyrotechnics within the corporate limits of the city, except when done by an employee of the city as part of their official duties, or when hired by the city or one of its departments to do so on behalf of the city or other governmental entity. Section 2, all provisions of the ordinances of the City of Eureka Springs in conflict with the provisions of this ordinance are hereby repealed, and all other provisions of the ordinances of the City of Eureka Springs not in conflict with the provisions of this ordinance shall remain in full effect. Separability, section 3, separability. Should any sentence, paragraph, clause, phrase, or section of this ordinance be adjudged or held to be unconstitutional, illegal, or invalid, the same shall not affect the validity of this ordinance as a whole, or any part of provision thereof, other than the parts so decided to be invalid, illegal, or unconstitutional, and shall not affect the validity of the Eureka Springs Municipal Code as a whole.
Mr. Thomas?
Yeah, I move to pass ordinance number 2279 on its first reading.
Second.
And discussion? All those in favor, sing five, sing aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved.
I move to suspend the rules and read ordinance number 2279 by title only on its second reading.
Second.
Motion and a second to read by title only, any discussion? Okay.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Schneider?
Yes.
Ms. Harmon?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
4-0. Ordinance number 2279, an ordinance amending Title VII of the Eureka Springs Municipal Code to clarify use of items containing powder or other combustible or explosive materials, or to employ or in any way utilize theatrical pyrotechnics.
Mr. Thomas?
Yeah, I move to pass ordinance 2279 on its second reading.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, sing five, sing aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. All right, that brings us up to discussion with Public Works, Mr. Allen on our street projects. Motion to discuss?
Motion to discuss.
Second.
All right, Mr. Allen, you're up, sir. I think we all have your street plan and...
Oh, yes, that's good. On the streets, you know, planned 2019, and those totals are over budget than what we've got, so that's what we're kind of asking. We're looking at what we can do, of course, and we've got to be a little flexible as we go each budget we go in, but, you know, each year, revenue-wise, we're looking this year, we'd estimate $659,300 back. State turn back, of course, the big one is the sales tax is the main, what we pull back, of course, you guys have got that information. It all tells it up, and then, of course, the governor's, the street plan, that's, you know, the fund we've been utilizing, like last year, we utilized Hillside and Grand for that overlay. We couldn't have done that with our budget, so it's, it's a turn back, comes back from the cities now, and it's, Act 416, they're raising that this last session. First of October, gas tax goes up 3 cents in the diesel 6 in the state, so we're looking, you know, they're extra for the hybrids, electric vehicles, they're going to take 35 million from the casino revenue, but, so we're hoping we will receive some of that. The state's, the city's 20 percent, look like 13 more million dollars a year, so if the next election, if the half-cent sales tax pass is made permanent, they're looking at maybe 144 million per year for the cities when that is all in place. So, you know, we get in line, there's over 500 incorporated cities, so it's, you know, we have to make a good case for that. That's 100 percent up to 250,000. We can do 450 of matching, a bigger project, but just a little bit of how we make that work. But, so as we come into this year, we had budgeted 320,531. So the last several years, we budgeted just a little bit below. We've turned some funds back in, and of course, we've always got to keep some extra funds in case of disasters. We're looking, we've had, in the last decade, we've had eight presidential disasters, as you know, here, a handful of state disasters. here are a handful of state disasters, you're talking over a million dollars' worth of damage, and the state now, it does not reimburse their percentage of disasters, they can't afford it, that's out, so, but utilizing that with the FEMA funds that we've put over the years, we've got $925,000 in surplus at this point, so we're looking to maybe ask to use some of that for some overlay in the city this year, of course, we don't wanna, we don't wanna get close to, you know, in case we had another slide or ice storm or something, so that's kind of, that's kind of what we're talking about, and those funds, so 620 we're putting in for this year, approximately a third of that's salaries, wages, a third of that's street lights, professional service, other things, a third of that then becomes street maintenance that we can look at, and that includes patching and whatever we have to do, snow plowing, and then whatever we can squeeze extra out of that, then we try to preserve some streets, so, as you can see, it makes it real difficult to maintain the streets, so, but that's kind of what we're looking at, and in the list, you'll see, this year we've, this year, you know, last year, we, we had the grant for the tunnel, and then we did Hillside and Grant, this year we're looking at more, some drainage projects to try to save some of the streets that we've been wanting to do for a few years, and then, and kind of with Parks, Grand Street, that project that's for drainage, but then you'll see there's several streets here, we're talking about overlay, and I'm kind of wanting to utilize, with those, those numbers, the estimates, that's not really a two-inch overlay, that's a, we wanna kind of, it's a modified aggregate quickset type deal, which is a third of the price, and that's what we'd like to do, utilize that, so those numbers are kind of reflected of that, and if you started talking about the project we did last year on those, we, they would be escalating, because we're talking, that job, the Hillside and Grant, you're talking 6,000 linear feet, that was $270,000 job, that was, you're looking at basically four, $45 a linear foot, it was 16,000 ton on that job, so, and it's cord asphalt, what it'll be this year, it's close to 150 a ton last year, we could, possibly, we could do this modified overlay for $15 a linear foot, so, I think it'd be good, and we could maybe seal some stuff, that's what we're looking at, and trying to, you know, hopefully get back in to do some, like some of the major streets, some of the overlay from the state funds then, but, so, we don't know exactly how much we would ask at this point to pull out, but we would like to come back and say, could we have some reserves, maybe? So, that's kind of what we're looking at this year. Of course, with the rain, we've had a few things that have fell in, and you never know what's coming up, but nothing serious, you know, we've patched up a few holes, nothing as far as a disaster at this point.
I just have a couple questions, so, just, I just wanna make sure that I understand what you're saying, you're saying that you've got a surplus of $900,000, correct?
Yes.
Approximately, that's what you're anticipating for the year, or you actually have it now?
I have that now.
You have that now, okay, and then this list that you gave us, you've got an estimate on here of 300 and, around 340, as to what each of these things are going to cost, and on this list, which items have already been completed?
Like I said, you know, some of these will be covered by the existing budgets, of course, the Flint Street job that we came in and finished the last section of that this year, the basic of all of it was done, except along the parking meters and the traffic, that was done, and then the Mountain Street project was done, we've done some, the Berryville-Linsey job, we just finished, drainage improvements there.
Okay, so you've got, you've got Flint Street, you said, is complete?
Yes.
Okay, and then Mountain Street Drainage Improvements, that's complete?
Yes.
And what was the other one?
We have, we have finished the Berryville-Linsey job, that was a small job there, but it was, it was needed.
Which one is that?
Berryville.
Oh, Drainage Improvements, Berryville-Linsey, okay.
And we're, kind of this concrete street work, we're in process, we're, so we, Pendergrass Corner is complete, we still have to come back, and there's a, part of the sidewalk there is failing under, and, you know, there's a void underneath, but, you know, it's a private sidewalk, but there's, you know, the water meters there, so that portion of it is our liability, so we've still gotta come back on that, you know, we finished some concrete work at the intersection, Spring and Main, we just, we just poured by the Trolley Depot, South Main, right, today we're working on the loop to finish some, some projects up there, so.
Okay, so you would say those four things that you just mentioned are complete, and the rest of the things are either in progress, or will be, you're going to try to get to them this year, correct?
Yes, that's, that's the hope, if we could get enough, save enough money, and then to justify enough to come out of the reserves, and if we can't, some of those we might have to peel off.
Okay, so, so you're saying that 338, 340 is not sufficient for what you need to do after further evaluation, or?
No, I'm saying that is correct, but the, but this, this amount will not fit in the budget of the 600,000 that I turned in for 2019, because, you know, I can only look at probably, you know, 200,000 for street maintenance, as I come into every year.
Okay, so this is your wish list, and this is what you're thinking it's going to cost?
Yeah.
This is not what you're actually, you'd love to get it done, but this is the cost associated with that, okay, got it?
Right, yeah, yes, and, and some of this, maybe more, and of course, we always try to keep it below that if we can, you know.
Okay, but your real, your real cost, or your real budget is around 200, what'd you say, 220, 230?
Yeah, the, you know, the full budget was like 620 or whatever, but you're talking a third of that back to maintenance, because you've gotta look at the other things you're pulling out of that money.
Okay, alright.
And of course, we, we don't ever budget for over, you know, expected revenues.
Right, okay.
I'm telling a lot of this, we'll come back at mid-year budget review also.
So, we, we might've got a little aggressive, but a lot, I mean, all of this needs done, of course, we could, we could add some more to that, but, but I think utilizing that, which, now, we've, we utilize that at the school, in front of the school, and it's kind of hard to tell that it's not actual payment, I mean, it's, we won't get quite the mileage out of it, but, but overall, even if you come back and did it twice, you still, you know, double up, you could still, it seems like you come ahead, I think it's a, it's a great way to go with our budget, I mean, it would be, it'd be great if we could just, you know, go in and put two and a half inches all over town, but we obviously can't do that, so, but that's the main thing, every year we gotta try to seal and keep the water out of what we can, and keep the water from, you know, taking it off, so, it's a, you know, it's, it's every year, and of course, it changes with the weather and what we have to do, but hopefully, that's what we hope, we can keep that in and come back and still, still keep enough reserve and still get this done.
Ms. Snyder?
So, basically, what you're saying is rather than a wish list, it's more like avoiding future catastrophes?
Well, I mean, it's, some of this, if you don't, if you, if you don't address it, then it could get to the point, like, we've got some streets that are to the point now that we can't really overlay them, unless, it almost needs to be tore out and start from scratch.
But that's what you're thinking, something bad and repairing rather than worse?
Yeah.
Okay.
You gotta try to stay ahead of it.
Which would cost a zillion more.
Yeah, and we've, of course, we've had some hits over the years, but, but that's, that's took us about a decade to build that up, that 900,000, you know, back and forth here and there, so, but we don't wanna, we wanna, we don't wanna spend it all, obviously.
Mr. Meyer?
You got some, I noticed you're addressing some stormwater problems, drainage, I know that Berryville is a, is still a pretty bad spot there, every time we get a storm, there's gravel all the way across, all the way down to the curb, is there any plan to do something about that?
Well, that's what we're, we're bringing out as much asphalt as we can on the street, and then we're gonna kind of burn to try to catch it, the, the only fix really to totally solve that would be go back on private land almost, they graded that out several years ago, and, and that really shouldn't have happened, you know, all that, it's gravel, we put a playground set in there, whatever, and, but the gentleman there had unfortunately passed away, and we talked to the, to the owners in that area, they're not, they don't really care if we come out a little farther, so that's what we're kind of doing, then trying to, you know, to make sure we get the water on down on the corner on Lindsay, bring it on down, and it comes across to Flint, but that's what we're trying to do, is catch that as much as we can and keep it on the street, because like you say, every time it rains, we have to run a sweeper up there and clean it, and it's, it's a problem. Berryville itself, we've put some asphalt just kind of in the front, but a lot of this is coming in, you know, off the side there, so.
Yeah, I know, it kind of looks like maybe there needs to be some culverts diverting the water instead of just making it go on downhill, because...
Well, it's, you know, that's a possibility of getting it and tying into, down on Lindsay, this is where it all comes down, we've got one across, is the culvert they put on Lindsay's, it doesn't catch as much as, you know, the way it was designed.
Right.
It's kind of, it's kind of, but we've tried to clean that out and make it as efficient as possible, but, you know, at some point, it's probably gonna take some more money than what I have on here, you're correct, but we, we can improve it.
And on Steel Street, the sidewalk up Steel Street, I learned that there had been a plan to put a rail along there, and, because people are almost afraid to walk down that and fall off, and, could we possibly squeeze that back into the budget?
Well, that one, I, you said, you know, some of sidewalks are put in, and then we take them in and keep them in, but a lot of those, they go back to the property owners, you know, so, I mean, we, you're talking on Steel Street, I think part of that would have to be, you have to look at that, because I think the city doesn't own that entirely anymore, so.
So we only go from curb to curb, we don't own the sidewalks?
Alright.
So then we're improving...
So the people that own those empty lots along there are responsible for?
Correct. So otherwise, we're improving people's private property.
Can we nail them?
We're improving people's private property.
Probably like you say, with that, with that amount of height there, it should've, you know, been engineered with, with rails on there, but, you know, and then, say, some of that we put in, say it's along a state highway, then we have to maintain as far as there was any money came back to it, or if, of course, the property, our property's there, but, you know, we get into, you know, how far back do you wanna, to try to go and enforce code, and, I mean, that's an ongoing issue with sidewalks right now, is, you know, how much are you forced to get private people?
That's the only sidewalk that side of town, so.
Yeah, yeah, and there was, there was part of it that came around Flint, we've had some, where some walls have fell, and then, and then some of the drainage, in case it comes in, sometimes if it's our drainage, we can kind of help, so we, we helped with some of that sidewalk up there, but, you know, some, some of it, we just can't do legally.
Any other questions?
Well, I just have one thing, other thing, some of the neighbors up there would like to see something like Jacob's Ladder going down Berryville Avenue, so that they can walk downtown.
It would be good, because that's so steep there, and you got the gravel, it is dangerous, and we, we did some work on Jacob's Ladder, and with some of the railing, had repaired that this last fall.
Yeah, that's, that's real nice, if we had something like that going up Berryville.
That's something maybe, you know, if a grant opportunity was to come there, you know, some of these sidewalks that we've had that has been put in, and Glenn has helped us with some of those, that's been some grant money where we could do it, sometimes there is some grant money for that, trails or sidewalks, and, you know, you get back to water and wastewater, it's usually nothing, but that's something we could look at, if, if we could, we could fund it, and, you know, we could, we could do it price it, but it'd be nice if we had a grant to do that, because then you'd be pulling back from, from that 200,000 per year that we discussed, yeah.
And one more thing, what do we do to change the speed limit on East Mountain and Eccles?
Well, that's, that's, that's up to council, I mean, of course, you know, you probably want, usually PD on the signage, you know, PD, we back, or they go with us, we kind of bounce it forth, but as far as setting that, that's, that's council sets that, we don't do that.
Thanks. Anybody else? Ms. Snyder?
So, does Public Works need us to make a motion type thing to do this?
No.
Okay.
Not at this point.
They don't, well, that's what I mean.
No.
Okay.
That's just a few.
This is just updates, I forgot who it was that wanted to talk about, Mr. Meyer and Ms. Green wanted to talk about the streets, so.
Well, they want to take this special money out, don't they need our approval?
Not at this point in time, we're not, we're not asking for any extra money at this point.
Oh.
Probably the mid-year budget will know exactly more closer what we're at.
Okay.
We'll be back.
Good, make sure you fix your employee in the meantime.
Alright, nothing else?
I'm tired of swimming.
Thank you very much, Don, appreciate it. Alright, that gets us up to update on North Street property, motion to discuss?
Motion to discuss, second.
Alright, I talked to the appraiser today, and I am, I haven't gotten it yet, but he was working on the final road reach on it, it gets pretty complicated, because it's, he's appraising it as a residence, we have the appraisal on business commercial side, and so I'm talking with him, and again, I was supposed to have it all week, and he assured me today I'd get it, so I'm gonna have to forward this on to you later on, but also along that same note, I've gotten in contact too with administrator at Mercy Hospital in Berryville, who might be interested in leasing that from us, we don't want to sell it, so that's something to keep in the back of your minds, so, they're gonna be getting back in touch with me, yes, ma'am?
Real quick question, at what point, or, I know we've talked about property being sold or not being sold, now you've mentioned this thing about Mercy Hospital, is, like, how do we go about just saying we'd like for it to be listed and put up?
We can't, we can't list it, we have to put it up for auction.
We have to put it up for auction.
We want, I wanted to get the appraisers for appraisals, for the council to be able to have every, all the information available to you before we did that, if this is what the council wants to do.
Okay, and then the Mercy thing, you're gonna have an update, how soon do you think you'll have that?
I think I'll know that by the next meeting.
Okay, alright.
Yep, so, anyway, any other questions? Okay, I had come up with Mr. Thomas and discussion of the master recent update, most recent master plan, motion to discuss?
Motion to discuss, second.
Alright, Mr. Thomas?
Yeah, I'd like to pass something down, and make sure that Mr. Buford and the two reporters get a copy, please, I'm gonna be making a motion, it's kind of complicated. So, start out with saying, the Vision Plan for Eureka Springs, and I think, I hope everybody has a copy of the Vision Plan, prepared by the UALR Donahue Project and adopted by the City Council on November 12, 1997, will soon be celebrating its 22nd birthday. The Vision Plan calls for an ongoing planning process to periodically review the city's progress toward its vision. To the best of my knowledge, there has never been any such annual report to the City Council on progress made. This failure to report is unfortunate for two reasons. This failure to report is unfortunate for two reasons. Without review and without public reporting, citizens rightly or wrongly are led to believe that the vision plan, rather than providing a working guide for the city's development, was simply left to gather dust on some bookshelf somewhere. And it would be inappropriate to consider either revising or replacing the vision plan without first having assessed its usage and impact on the community. At this point, it would not be appropriate to ask the Planning Commission, with its only four members, to undertake an assessment and to prepare a report on the progress made under the vision plan over the past 22 years. In order to produce such a report on the vision plan as expeditiously as possible, I suggest the following four-part motion, unless the chairman or the attorney tells me I should be making four motions. Anyway, at this point, I move for the council to request that the Planning Commission look over the 16 proposals and policies in the vision plan and then assign each of the four members of the Planning Commission and each of the six council persons the responsibility to research and report on one of those 16 items. Request that the Planning Commission consider options or persons to review and report on the remaining six items. Request that the Planning Commission set up a joint workshop for council and planning where the 10 individual reports and possibly the remaining six could be presented, discussed, edited, and merged into one update on the vision plan report. Request that planning accomplish these tasks within a reasonable timeframe, but as quickly as possible. That's a motion if anybody wants to second it.
Oh, second?
Motion and second. Discussion?
Lot to digest.
Mr. Weaver?
First portion of your motion, having the Planning Commission assigned, is improper. Planning Commission cannot direct City Council members to do anything.
Well, we could assume a City Council member could opt out, but, you know, what word would you use?
Certainly wouldn't put it to assign based on the Planning Commission.
Okay, how about ask?
Request potentially?
Yeah, ask each. Mm-hmm. How about... Okay. And then request each of the four members of the Planning Commission and each of the six council persons to research and report on one of these 16 items.
So you want the word request instead of assign?
Mm-hmm.
Ms. Harmon?
I just have a really quick question. I mean, this... I'm not saying that the vision plan isn't important. I'm just, I don't know why we're doing... I guess I have a different idea as far as doing... I mean, this seems like a lot of... This seems like a lot of motions. It seems like there's quite a few motions here to accomplish what. And my feeling is, what you're trying to do is you're trying to accomplish the... Or get an update on the vision plan as it stands now, at least on this particular version. So, um, to make it easy, wouldn't... In my opinion, I would say that we would make a request to the Planning Commission to review the vision plan and see what has been done and what hasn't been done and then report back to City Council.
Ms. Snyder?
Well, the problem is, looking at the book and having been around when they did this, it's going to be awfully hard for four people to do it, which is why he's listing the four planning commissioners and the six councilmen. Requesting them to do it as opposed to maybe motioning is fine, but the 10 of us need to work together on this. Um, this is way too much for four people. We... And us older people, long timers, know a lot more about what's in here and what's going on or what has or hasn't, but it needs to be split up among 10 people rather than four.
Ms. Harmon?
I just have a question and actually have a question for Tom because I know Tom's on the Planning Commission. So can I... Can he come up to the mic just so I can ask a question or a couple of questions of him? Sorry, Tom.
See what happens when you come?
I think I remember when, just within the last six months, that the vision plan was on the agenda for the Planning Commission, if I remember correctly. And I think that was supposed to be on the agenda for 2019. Is that correct? Do you guys still have it on your, as a to-do?
Yeah, I think it was something to look at. Now, keep in mind on the planning right now, we've got four people on it, two have been on it less than six months.
Right.
So there's really nobody... There's not a lot of whole history on the Planning Commission right now. It's always, you know, what's happened in the last several years. I guess you could go back and take the vision plan and research and find out what's been done and had been done, but there's not a lot of history on the Planning Commission right now.
Okay, so if you guys were to do... If you were to review what has been done, the majority of that would be done through the mayor's office, correct? And whoever else on staff that could update you as to what has been accomplished on here or at least interpret what you think this vision plan had originally intended?
I'd assume so, yes, uh-huh.
I mean, because we would... That would basically be the same thing that we would be doing here, is trying to interpret what it is actually saying and what has been accomplished, but most of that information should be at City Hall, correct? So it wouldn't necessarily be that we need somebody who has been on planning...
Somebody to coordinate the information.
Or has been on council for years. It's just a matter of trying to figure out what things have been done. I mean, to me, it seems like it should be done through the mayor's office and you wouldn't necessarily have to have lived here for a long time or been on a commission for a long time to be able to... And maybe I'm completely wrong, but, I mean...
If you were on the Planning Commission then?
I was on the Planning Commission and that would be my first step, would be to go to City Hall and to ask those questions once I've deciphered what the main points were out of this particular vision plan.
Yeah, I don't think Planning has any problem trying to coordinate, you know, this with this proper in the city to talk to about that. Report back to City Council.
Mr. Thomas?
Well, planning, I might have a question for you, I don't know. You know, planning has only been there for three or four years, the longest person maybe. All of us here have only been here for maybe sitting five years, six years. We're talking about an annual report that has not been done for 22 years. That was the responsibility of the Planning Commission. I'm not faulting this Planning Commission because they have been around for 22 years. So this is a wonderful opportunity to put the responsibility for it with planning where it belongs, but also to provide some assistance for them and to provide a project where we can all work together cooperatively and I think council and planning could really benefit from that.
I agree.
Further discussion?
Can I add anything? Okay. And I don't have a problem with that as far as everybody being involved. I just think initially, I think it should be placed in planning's court and allow them to put together the information and then find out as much information as they should because this is... Because you're right, this is the... This is a responsibility of planning. But I think that's where it should start and then maybe we can be involved on maybe the second, the last 50% of it as opposed to all of these steps. Just my opinion.
Ms. Snyder?
I think either Terry, the mayor, or me should contact Beverly Blankenship. She has the most incredible research abilities and was the chair of planning and while she was the chair, she did incredibly awesome with this stuff.
I'm sorry. Contact Beverly and do what?
Beverly Blankenship.
Mm-hmm.
See what she knows or if she would like to look into it.
She wasn't on the planning or the council when that was going on.
No, not... No, that was before all of our times, but what I'm saying is, she's an incredible researcher and she has looked into this when she was chair. See if she has any background knowledge, if she'd be interested in continuing, looking into it. She was phenomenal on that. We may have argued about a lot of other stuff, but she was phenomenal on this stuff.
Mr. Thomas?
I think that I hear you say that if it was assigned to planning alone, he would have basically two people with some real knowledge of the city.
Well, no, I'm just saying that planning right now has four people and two have not been on very long.
Exactly.
But I mean, we'd be... You know, planning would be happy to work with the city and try to research.
Right.
What we can, yeah.
And so somebody's going to have to, you know, and I know you could say, "Mayor did all this information for me," but I don't think the mayor would want to do it. Somebody's going to have to go to parks, somebody would have to go to transit, somebody would have to go to Public Works, you know, somebody would have to go here, there, and there. And I don't... I just think it's a great opportunity for us all to work on a common goal and common project.
Any other comments? All right, well, we got a motion and a second. Uh, there's no further comments.
I'm sorry. What was the motion?
I think the motion is, I moved as he wrote it down.
So these four, so all of this?
Yep. It's my understanding. Is that correct?
Yes.
All right. All those in favor sing five saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'm opposed.
Three, one, fails.
Um, do we... Should we... Can we postpone till when we have a full quorum? Well, I mean, a full seating? We're not used to this.
I think what I'm hearing, and if Mr. Thomas and what I'm hearing from Ms. Harmon, is that the Planning Commission, if we can direct them, I think what Mr. Thomas is wanting is a report and I think we can ask the Planning Commission to come up with a report and see where we're at. May not be completely satisfied to all these requests, but I think that's the beginning of where we are and what we can do on there.
And offer to help them.
And I think we've got to be careful not to be able to keep our legislative bodies... The City Council's a legislative body. The Planning Commission is a planning body and be careful not to micromanage what the Planning Commission's doing. You're looking at me funny, but I'm not pointing this out at you. I'm just saying that we need to be careful.
Well, you're making... Are we discussing again?
No, um, the motion's been closed. I was referring to...
Yeah, because we're not used to only having four, so I was asking if we could redo.
Okay. Ms. Harmon, I'm sorry.
Do... In order for us to send this back to planning, do we need to make a motion?
You can make a motion.
Okay, I make a motion that we send this to planning for, um... That we send it to planning for them to come up with a review, an initial review, as to the vision plan from 1996 and where we stand on things that have either not been completed or have been completed that were within that vision plan. Does that make sense?
That's me. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, discussion. Mr. Thomas?
Yeah, I would like to amend that to say and report to council no later than the second meeting in June.
That's only a month.
Oh, is that a month?
Yeah.
No later than the second meeting in July.
Can I amend that?
Uh, there had been a second on that one.
There had been a second, that's right. Okay.
All right. Mickey, you want to...
Can we just request planning to look into this in a very timely fashion?
That's more or less the motion.
Well, if we request them to work with us on going through this whole book...
The motion is to report back to us, to look through this and report back to us. There wasn't a time limit put on it. Mr. Thomas wouldn't...
Yeah, and what I'm seeing is, can't we just ask them to work with us on going through this book?
The Planning Commission is going to go through that and come back and report back to us and at that point, we can decide what we want to do.
I know.
There's a motion on here.
This reporting back stuff just isn't cutting it right.
Okay, well, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on that? Okay, all those in favor of... Would you like to repeat your motion? I'm sorry.
So the motion is to send this to planning for them to review the 1996 vision plan for the city of Eureka Springs and to report back to City Council as to what items have been completed or are still in need of being completed as to how the vision plan was written.
All right. A motion and a second. Mr. Thomas?
Are we still discussing her?
Yes.
I would appreciate somebody explaining to me the difference between her motion not being Michael managing versus my motion being Michael managing.
She's letting the Planning Commission make the decision coming back. Your motion has the City Council being involved.
At planning's direction or request, yeah.
All right. Any further discussions? All those in favor sing five saying aye?
Aye.
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 All right, four of them. So moved. All right. That brings us up to our previously proposed animal law changes.
Oh, make a motion to discuss the animal law changes.
Okay, get a second. Got a motion to discuss. Did I hear a second?
Oh, second.
All right. Ms. Snyder?
Um, Mr. Attorney, how did we leave the changes we came up with? Wasn't it just until we finished any additional changes? We had, um, just the 100-foot thingy. We had, um, the little piggy thingy, the mini pigs, uh... And I thought we had all these worded things. I thought that was just ready to go. We were going to wait to see if we're adding any more because Melissa was bringing up the temperature weather thing, which ended up not being put on there.
It's my understanding, and the record, of course, is the record, that we were going to, yes, wait till we had a better picture of what Ms. Green might want to add or what other council members might want to add. And we went ahead and finished the animals in the vehicle a little quicker maybe than the rest of council is wanting for the other stuff because of the time of year. So I think it is now appropriate, unless council is going to consider other animal ordinances, to go ahead and prepare, uh, documents for the council to look at regarding the pigs and minimal areas and those other issues. But the pressing nature of the rising temperatures is the reason that the other one was completed first.
Okay, what documents are you talking about that we need? We already had habitat.
And we need the ordinance itself.
I thought this was.
That's not an ordinance, I don't believe. That's a list of what was...
Okay, this was the proper wording. This was the change of wording that was going to be used. So do we just need to take this and say, "Please put it in proper ordinance form and submit it"?
It's my understanding you've already done that.
Well, that's what I thought. So is it a matter of giving it a number and reading it?
No, it needs the proper wording now and it should have that happen in the next meeting or so.
So if we tell you, "Go ahead and give us the proper wording for the next meeting," that's all it needs?
It's in the works of having that happen.
Well, that's what I thought like six months ago.
You're in the process of doing that.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so what do we have to do to finally get the first reading on it?
We don't have to do anything. Mr. Weaver has to do.
So do we have to say, "Mr. Weaver, would you please bring this next meeting"?
You should have it by the next meeting or the following meeting, depending on how many ordinances it actually breaks down to. It'll break down to at least two and it may break down to more.
Well, I was going to say, this one was the original rewording thing and then Melissa had said temperatures and we went a different way with that and now she's doing the dogs in a car and that's separate, so this thing can go.
Unless the council at this... Unless the council at this point wants to defer it to consider other issues, which I don't know of any that you do.
Yeah, I think we've pretty much covered everything.
I believe at this time, you're, you're ready to have ordinances prepared for at least the two issues that are on that list.
Okay, so, would you please bring it next meeting? Thank you.
Anything else from anybody, Ms. Harmon?
A hundred-foot thingy in the piggies, that's what I have. Is there any way for us to get our hands on that prior to the meeting? Like, a day or two before the meeting?
Okay, you have a copy.
So that we can read what you've put together? Do we get to see that before...
The ordinance itself?
Before our envelope is set here on the table? Just so we can actually read it?
If I get a chance to prepare it that soon, as I said, it may be, it may be two meetings before you get to vote on it. But most likely, it'll be ready before next meeting.
If it's not, if we don't have it, we can always defer it until the next meeting. We don't have to read it and act on it immediately after he proposes it.
Okay, I just want to be able to read, see what's there and what's being proposed. And, and prepare sufficiently for that, okay.
The decision was made to get the part out that you read tonight and last meeting because of the rising temperatures.
I understand that one. I'm just asking about the others.
This will come out in the normal order now, that we have no more issues being debated.
Okay, any further discussion? All right, that brings us up to our next item, a discussion of appointing somebody to read the letters, Ms. Snyder, Ms. Harmon.
Motion to read, I mean, to discuss?
Second.
All right, Ms. Snyder?
Susan, do you have something you want to throw in there about that?
I mean, it, it still stands, I mean, I know that we, I know that the city council, as a, um, as a voting entity, said they don't want to read letters anymore. I'm willing to read letters, I don't know if, if anybody is willing to reconsider that. I think it is, I think it is, I mean, I just feel deeply that it is a thing that this, you know, if, if I'm in the hospital and there's an issue that maybe I, perhaps it affects me directly, I would like to be able to send a letter in, and I would like that to be a part of the minutes of that particular meeting. Therefore, I know Ann had sent something that said, you know, if we're just attaching it or saying it should be attached to the meeting, it's not officially a part of the meeting, if I understand that right, right, Ann?
If it's not part of the meeting, it does not get attached. However, the motion was not, the motion was only regarding council members reading letters. It was not about letters being read.
Okay, so, I guess what I'm saying is, if I have no one to come in during public comments and read my letter, I, I would still want it to be part of those minutes, and therefore, in that circumstance, I may need a city council member to read that letter. And my thought is that I think we should still provide that right to the citizens of Eureka Springs in those circumstances. You know, someone may be in the hospital, somebody may be out of town, and it may be an important issue down the road that would require, not require, that would be a courtesy of the city council to provide to a citizen.
Mr. Thomas?
I believe that you're asking council to reconsider its vote from two weeks ago, and I'm not sure how you voted when we voted last time. Did you vote for it or against it?
I vote, I voted against it.
Then you, you cannot ask for it to be reconsidered, only someone who voted for it can ask for it to be reconsidered.
We're not asking...
She specifically said, she wanted us to reconsider.
She said she would like to, she didn't make that deal, okay. Ms. Snyder?
Okay, we cannot make a law naming Ms. Harmon and I to read letters, but both of us are willing to do it. So, I would just like to make it a statement or request, I'm not sure which terminology to use, that if for whatever reason, letters come to us and the person cannot come or cannot have someone read it, that either one of us will read it. We are volunteering to do this. So, how do we word that, Mr. City Attorney?
I think, again, it goes back to what Mr. Thomas was saying.
No, we're not, no, I said, we're not making a law, we can't make a law. Susan and I are on there right now, we might not be on here next month. So, all we can say is, we're volunteering, so I'm asking the city attorney how we can state that we are volunteering to be available for letter reading.
I think what you just said is, as close as you're gonna get, you're not gonna pass an ordinance or a resolution
Yeah, well, no, we don't want...
that requires that because of...
Mr. Thomas is right.
Well, no, we don't want to anyway, 'cause like I said, in a month, we might not be here. So, I guess what we're doing then is, we're stating, right now, someone has a letter that for some reason they can't read, Susan and I are here to do it. Does that work? We're just making a statement?
At that point, it will be up to the other council members if they want to call for a...
They voted against reading, they didn't vote on any letters by anybody. They said, no, they were not going to read, so fine, they don't get to read. Susan and I voted against it, so we can read.
You cannot violate the majority rule.
No, we're not, the majority doesn't want to read, so they won't.
They can call for a point of order, and then it'll be up to a vote of the council.
Well, if they want to sit there and mess around with our people like that, I guess that's their business, 'cause they could just sit there quietly and let us read the stupid letters.
Your motion, well, it's the council, can I read the letters?
We're not council, we're people volunteering.
That got nothing to do with it, so, all right.
It's ridiculous.
I've got a question.
Yes, sir.
If, if a citizen writes a letter to their member of the council and asks them to read it at the city council meeting, or if a councilperson gets, gets a letter and decides to read it at a meeting, does that violate our... If it's restricted to the three minutes that anybody else is up?
The way your motion was made and the way I understand it, the request to have it read would be the violation if you agreed, not the decision of a council member as part of their own discussion to use portions or all of a letter in their discussion.
Okay, thank you.
So, what you're saying, Tim, is that we can sit there and actually read the letter without saying we're reading a letter?
No, Ms. Harmon?
Okay, so, just a quick, just a quick question, so, for, um, Tim, if, if I did receive a letter and I felt that it needed to be read as a courtesy to that particular citizen, could I just read it during public comments? Can I physically be a part of public comments?
If you read it during public comments as their letter, you would be in violation of the way it was passed.
No, that's not right. If we go up there as a person, not as a councilman, I have done that. I have gone to the microphone as a resident and during the three-minute public comment, and Butch, you were there when I did it, Terry was there, Tim was there, and that was perfectly fine. So, if I go up to the mic and I read this letter, whether I stated somebody else's or not, if I'm up there as a resident, that is legal.
Ms. Meyer?
If I get a letter from a constituent, I can ask to add it to the agenda and read the letter.
That you can do.
There you go.
But not as public comment.
And would you let us do it that week, Tom?
I wouldn't stop you from doing anything, Ms. Snyder.
No, you're the one, you were the one who did that thing, we can't add any last-minute stuff.
Any further discussion? All right. Our discussion of Uber and Lyft in Eureka Springs, although Mr. McClung made the motion, he's not here. Mr. Thomas, you have any idea what this is about?
Uh, I think that he, Mr. McClung wanted the city attorney to talk to us about the legislature, state legislature's ruling on Uber and Lyft.
Okay, can motion discuss?
Motion to discuss.
Second. All right.
As far as I understand, the current standing in the law, keep your paws off. Council has no authority over Uber or Lyft, all at the state level.
Ms. Harmon?
But they are able to be here in Eureka Springs as Uber or Lyft, correct?
Yes, but they are under the commission that governs through the state, not under a local law.
They'd have to have business license.
They do.
Other than jail.
And that's for any individual who decides they want to be a part of that organization or those organizations? They have to have a business license. Okay, gotcha.
All, all regulation as to who can drive, how they drive, where they drive, that is all state regulated.
Okay.
Ms. Snyder?
So, that means all of the laws that we pass for the safety of our people and visitors riding in taxis and limos and what have you, all of that's just down the tubes now because of Uber and stuff?
No, you still have some regulation over taxis.
But why would we have taxis if Uber can come in?
That is an issue that you probably need to take up with your state legislature.
Yeah, like, that's gonna fly.
Because they made the determination that Uber and Lyft and its other entities that are smaller are all not taxi services, and they're not thereby subject to local regulation, they are only subject to state law.
So, our safety concerns doesn't matter?
That's where you have to address your next level of representation.
Yeah.
All right, any further comments? All right, brings us down to agenda setting. Bob, you have anything?
No.
Anybody? Yes, sir. Mr. Meyer?
I'm not gonna be here the 26th.
I think that's one of the items we need to bring up, is our next meeting, it's Memorial Day.
No, it's not.
But I would like to add to the agenda, whenever we have our next meeting, I'd like to add the speed limits on Echols and East Mountain Drive, and add the subject of adding cord.
Speed limits on Echols?
On Echols and East Mountain. And the second one is adding...
Excuse me, we need a second for your...
I'll second that.
Thank you. And adding corally to the street system.
And I'll second that one.
All right, anybody else? Our next meeting is technically on Memorial Day. It is not technically, it is on Memorial Day. The options we have is to cancel that meeting. It looks like those two items are the only thing I know right now on the agenda, so we could wait until the first meeting in June to take those up.
Looks for me.
If that's okay with everybody? All right, do you have another item for agenda?
Let's take a vote on that.
I want to make a vote, can I make a motion to that?
Sure, yep.
Okay, I make a motion to cancel our budget meeting and our city council meeting on, is it the 27th? May...
Yep, 27th.
27th or 26th?
27th.
27th.
Yep.
Of 2019.
Okay, second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, sing five, sing aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so move.
Technically, you changed your rules, so they probably should individually vote.
Oh, okay.
Oh.
All right, call the, yeah, change our rules, so we gotta have a roll call vote.
Oh. Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Ms. Harmon?
Yes.
Let's hear it.
Did that include going on the 10th? I didn't hear that part.
Just skipping?
Oh, just skipping, okay.
Comments, Mr. Thomas?
Why am I always first?
Well, I can go down this way, I mean, I'm sorry.
That's okay, I don't mind.
Let me do it this way, okay? Mr. Meyer?
No more comments.
All right, Ms. Harmon?
No.
Ms. Snyder?
Why didn't you start with you? Okay, yeah, I've got a whole list. First of all, Happy Mother's Day, everyone. I want you to notice a really nifty coffee cup that my marine son got me. It says, "I'm a great mom, I'm very special, very beautiful, I'm the best." All of the moms are disasters. Everyone agrees, believe me, it's got a picture of Crum. That's from my marine, yes, a little... So, Happy Birthday to him, coming up. Happy Birthday to my oldest son, Tracy, who, three days later, and is this town ready for this? He delivered his son on the bedroom floor, and as such a good boy scout, he used the shoelaces from his sneakers to tie the umbilical cord. Oh, yes. So, Tracy, who was raised here, now has a new son, Ian Michael Trace Clark. Good grief, the name is bigger than the little baby. But the real kicker was, his wife took pictures of him delivering, so I have some really great pictures on my phone. Yeah, kids nowadays. Okay, Memorial Weekend, quit snickering. Memorial Weekend at the cemetery on Saturday, Sunday, and Monday, they will have a table, and I think snacks, but I'm not gonna swear to that, in regards to selling cemetery plots when you're out there visiting your loved ones and stuff, and snacks and all this kind of thing. Apparently, this is done every year, and it's really huge, so, yes, please do come by and visit us. We still take volunteers to help clean headstones and stuff. So, we've got that going on. Um, let's see, oh, and just a warning, yes, cedar pollen is excessively bad this year, which is why I have this, not a sunburn, that cedar allergy, so be careful out there. That's it.
All right, Mr. Thomas?
My grandma has a bunion.
But hey, these kids were born and raised here.
Besides that, I'd like to go back and just briefly talk about the vision plan again, because I really fault councils for 22 years and planning commissions for 22 years for not doing, they're either one of them doing their job. And, and I just don't see the logic of someone saying, "I want you to do 22 years of ketchup" versus, "I want you to do 22 years of ketchup, and I'll help you if you ask me to." One of those being micromanaging and the other one not being micromanaging. I don't see the difference between those two. And the other thing I'd like to say is, if, if the chairman is gonna discuss after a vote, I think that he should allow everyone at the table to discuss after the vote.
Anything else?
That's it.
Thank you. All right. Events coming up, on the 17th of May, we have Antiquities at 7:00 PM here in the auditorium. It's a movie that was actually filmed partially in Eureka Springs, and so, it's gonna be shown here in the odd, and it's gonna be free for everybody who, to show up. And that's on the 17th. And that is gonna be the same evening as the White Street Walk from 4:00 to 10:00 upon White Street, which is our annual get-together up there, and so, that's always a great, great event. The 18th through the 19th, as we heard from our Parks Director, is the Enduro Bike Race. It's gonna be all over the area, all through our parks, Leatherwood, Passion Play, and in the town. And then on the 18th, we have Music in the Parks, starting at 2:30 with Arthur Duncan, and then at 5:30 will be Grady Nichols. And also that evening down here in the odd, we'll have We Dream Dawn at 7:00 PM, featuring the Elephant Revival and Jacob Fred Jazz Odyssey members. That's gonna be $12 in advance and $15 at the door. And then the 19th is one of my favorite events up at the Crescent Hotel Gardens. It's a 14th Annual Books in Bloom with a lot of different authors from all over the country here, talking about their books and doing readings from their books. And on the 20th through the 21st, we'll have the... And on the 20th through the 21st, we'll have the Plin Air Festival all around town, so you'll see artists and painters with their easels set up all over town doing artwork. And then on the 23rd through the 26th, we'll have the Christian Motorcycle Association, Heart of the Ozarks Rally, and that's going to be all around town. And then on the 25th, the Drumming in the Park from 6:00 to 8:00. And then on the 27th, the Courthouse will be closed in observance of Memorial Day. That's it, motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
If not, you stay here. Thank you.